Um, this is two. It is Tuesday, July first, uh, we'll call the zoning board appeals meeting uh to order at this time. Um, we'll do a rule call here. I have a list of names. And then we'll start off with uh Barry Peetner.
Barry.
Did pronounce that correctly, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yes. Pat Androni.
Eric.
Okay, Zach Roberts.
President.
Yeah. Our debut, our day for our, for our day. Yeah, that's right. The casual and myself, uh, Pop Green. So at this particular time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Same.
I was trying to be clear. The United States of America, into the Republic, firm which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. And ever seen in this far off.
Okay, at this point, we have public comment. Well, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the zoning board on any issue. We have one issue at this particular point in time. Uh, while we do encourage input from residents, we may not discuss or act on any issue that is not no duly noticed on the agenda. So if you would like to speak, we urge you to uh register, otherwise uh, anybody like to speak? Okay, we'll close the public comment section. Okay, we're going to go to general business, the regular meeting.
All right, so I can kind of kick this one off. Um, so today um, we're going to be discussing um, the petition from Barry and Jolene Stotts for an area variance variance from eighty-four point two-nine, um, which is G of the Village of Cross Plains Municipal Code of Ordinances, to allow a paver patio with a reduced setback into the rear yard at twenty-eight thirty Esser Street. Um, so I'll just kind of outline just what was in my memo, and I can kind of walk you through some of the materials that they had provided as well. Um, so to start, I'll just show you where we're looking. So this is their plat um that they provided. So this parcel is at the corner of Bear and Bear Street to the north and Esser Street to the west. So there are corner lot here, lot thirty-eight. Um, so that this is the parcel we'll be talking about today. Um, so they are hoping to add um, a paver patio, and I kind of have a little bit of.
Sure, let's go back to the size of the lot.
Sure.
We have the lot size is seventy-eight feet on the narrow side and then one of that uh hundred forty feet on the other side. So um, that doesn't, the reason I'm bringing it up, so I just, so everybody knows and understands that it does conform to uh, it exceeds and then the lot size for that particular uh zone in that area. In both uh in terms of the square footage. So it's kind of a point, but just to make sure that as we go in, that can look at whether the rules are applying in this particular situation, the lot size does is applicable.
And this is SR four um is the zoning district as well. Um, so as I was, oh, no problem, no problem. Um, so I will just kind of scroll down too, just to show you what um they're proposing for the site. This is just really big. Because there's pictures as well. So this is just kind of, go here. So this is what they're hoping to add. So this is a paver patio um that they're hoping to add um behind their home. Um, so we have kind of a drawing here. This is what I wanted to get to.
Yeah.
Oops, their site plan. Sorry, this packet is just.
And I sense it sounds just like.
That's okay.
You don't know what's applicable.
That's right. Okay.
Shout out, can't tell me too.
So what they have drawn here is where they are hoping to um add this expansion on their patio. So they have their existing patio here. Um, so again, this is on the eastern side of their home. Um, so their garage is here. Um, and so they would hope to extend the patio south. Um, and so they would also have a retaining wall as well. That's kind of what they're showing here with that um kind of lip sort of look.
She shaped. She shaped.
Wall because there's the recessed area on that back side of our house.
Do you, do you want us to talk now or do you?
Um, so I'll kind of just go through mine and then we'll probably turn it over. Does that sound okay, Bob?
Yeah, no, it sounds fine. And just speaking to the fact that you have that recess area between the lots. Mm-hmm. Generally, they put that in place so the drainage between each lot. So that's why recess areas include some water comes down between the lots. They want it to go out to the street. And that's why you'll see on most of the lots in the area, they haven't built so there's a recessed area versus the water will go down. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no problem. Um, so what they're proposing, so these would be um pavers, so patio pavers um that would encu- encompass this whole area. Um, and so it would be eighteen feet um from their home to the lot line. Um, and then they're looking at twenty-one feet um lengthwise, um which leaves um along the lot line, a ten inch setback, um which is what we're here tonight to discuss. Um, because the setback requirement per the zoning code is ten feet. Um, so, so that's the, that's the um rear setback that they're requesting, and I'm, I'm stating that it violates the zoning code. Um, and so, so basically what in our code, um in section eighty-two point two-nine, um, landscape features are what kind of um what patios are best um encompassed in. So this includes features such as ponds, gazebos, pergolas, decks, and other man-made lawn and landscaping elements. Um, so they meet the set, they have to meet the setback um and maximum building heights for accessory structures. So when you're looking in the zoning code and then you look at accessory structures under SR four, um, that's the setback we're looking at, which has that ten foot um requirement. And again, um, a setback is defined as the shortest distance between the exterior of a building or a structure and the nearest point on the referenced lot line. So like I said, it's that ten inches between where their patio ends and where the la- lot lot line is. Um, so setbacks are intended to keep um help keep safety and privacy protections um is what it says in our code.
If I could, just as it's kind of a, since you understand the code better than I do, the, I'm sure the concern is going to come up is the pavers are not actually a structure like a deck, but just a landscape feature. Is that correct? And under the zoning court, that still applies to the situation.
Yep, it, it is defined a landscape feature. Um, would still have that ten foot setback requirement per our zoning code, yes.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Um, so just seeing what else I've got here in my notes that we want to talk about. Um, so what we'll really be focusing on tonight um is evaluating the request based on the criteria that are used by the zoning board of appeals. Um, so those are on page, like earlier page, as part of the application that Barry and Jolene submitted. The standards for variance. So there are six of them. Um, and the first one, so I'll just kind of read these and then maybe we'll have Barry and Jolene kind of talk through things as well. Um, so we want to make sure um that since the zoning, so one other thing I wanted to mention too is that the zoning board of appeals is quasi judicial. Um, so meaning that what is decided here will not need um additional approval at the village board level or anything like that. So tonight, we're all here to follow the law, follow our zoning ordinance, um and you know, come to the best um decision possible. Um, so the standards for the variance, um this is um in the um state statutes as well, is number one, that there are conditions unique to the property of the applicant that do not apply generally to other properties in the district. Um, so that's one of those standards. So we want to, we want to make sure that um if this variance is to be granted, that it meets all of these. Um, that the variance is not contrary to the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulations in the zoning district. Um, it is not contrary to the public interest, and that substantial justice will be done if awarded. Um, so number three for an area, for an area variance, which is what we are doing tonight, um, because it has to do with setbacks. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would unreasonably prevent use of the property for a permitted purpose or would render compliance with the ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. And we can talk more about all of these later. I just want to make sure um everybody knows what they are. Number four is the alleged difficulty or hardship is created by the terms of the ordinance rather than by a person who has a present interest in the property. Number five, the proposed variance shall not create substantial detriment to the adjacent property. And number six, the proposed variance shall be compatible with the character of the immediate impact. So I just wanted to, to go through all of those, but should we give it, hand it over to Jolene and Barry?
Yes.
All right.
Um, can you show like the picture of like our diagram?
Sure.
Now, um, on the property line, we are already approved to put on the property line a retaining wall. Um, and then we're allowed to come up ten feet from the garage. Um, and the reason why we want to do this is we're having kind of, well, it's a, not a usable space because there's a lot of like uneven grounds. It's very hard to maintain. Um, and then we also have like melting and water that will run toward our house. I don't know how it was embankment or how they dug that out.
Yeah, the reduced elevation behind the garage, as you were saying, is to allow the water to run off. But during periods of excessive storm, rainwater runoff and during the spring thaw technically every year, it's so low that it's causing water to collect into our window wells and run into our basement.
Yeah.
So if you don't mind me asking a question, so.
See the actual, but actually the other one was probably about.
Okay.
Well, I can see the depression there. Interesting.
There.
Yeah, you have, you have a hump running where that was the, the cedar, whatever, the bushes are at. So it's like the hump is running there.
Yeah.
So that's actually like the flat part of the plateau toward Bob Oil's house, the adjacent property, where you can see we ran the surveyor's string there along those arboriding.
Mm-hmm.
That's actually where the slope begins, and from there towards the house is a little spot. Which is why we want to put the retaining wall in to keep it from collecting to, to undo amount against the house. So we like to catch what we can and direct it further towards uh Bear Street with the retaining wall. And then all we're looking to do is to fill the space between the house and the retaining wall with the pavers.
The way we're set up, we have such a little backyard that it's really hard. Like we have a small deck, but we can't like grill on it, can't do all that stuff on it. And then to mow around here is really just, it's not a usable space. Like we've had like a fire pit over here and you're, you're on like a hill. You're sitting on a hill because there's nothing. That's our only little privacy place that we have.
I guess my question is, just looking at this picture, is this string is coming down from the road?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the end of your property?
Yes, and then Bob Oil has a double lot on his side. And uh, but like I said, on that string right there, we can already put a retaining wall right there legally. So the retaining wall is probably going to go there regardless. And then what we're looking at is what we're approved right now is we can do that retaining wall right there. And we can dig out, but then we can only bring the paper patio out ten feet and we have like eight, nine feet that we would have to like have a patch of grass or something.
Or patch of grass to fill with gravel or something.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's, it's just, you know, we're always trying to, we take big pride in our house. Like we are big landscapers. We take, do everything that we can, and it's so hard to maintain that area too. It's just.
You're going to level off the property uh so that it, it is lower. So the, so the slope from your house is going to go down and go closer to the property line. So the grade will go up that way.
Well, retain the wall and go down. Yeah, I mean, the pavers themselves, we're going to back or uh build the grade with clear stone to create some water retention.
Sure, and then I'm going to separate the.
Yeah.
About pavers, I just want to talk about the grading. So you're going to have the grading, you're going to have when everything is said and done, the grade from your house to the grade to where your retaining wall is going to be going down. So the water will move away.
It will flow down.
Yeah, it'll flow down too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're going to level this regardless, whether you put pavers or not.
Right.
It's a, it's not a usable space.
Yeah, I, I understand. I just wanted to clear my mind how you're going to get to that point. That point is that you're going to pair them on landscaping.
Yeah.
And then whether papers go down or not, or grass, you will be changing the elevation of the lot.
Yeah.
From the house to the retaining wall. So it is a negative pitch to the retained wall. And then water, it's a retained wall that goes down to the street.
Correct.
And from like, from that side, you're not going to see, we're not going to go up very high. Like our retaining wall is going to be majority, you know, same from our end rather than there.
Are the, are providing, what is that, what are those bushes called?
Arboretum.
Arboretum. Are those going to disappear?
No, I love it. Well, there are only privacy. That's the other thing. That's our only privacy that we have. Uh, you know, our, this older part of town, you know, the setbacks don't fit so great with like our stuff. And I don't know if it's because we're on a corner lot or whatever, but even the whole neighborhood, you can see where people have all their sheds and we have everything right on the lot lines.
Yeah.
Because it's more of a cookie cutter.
No, no, I understand. How are you going to get around the, uh, I'm assuming the elevation that you're trying to change is still the same and underneath the patio deck. So it is a negative elevation. So it's going into the house from those bushes in your house.
When the rainwater floods, if it's not enough to spill over the window well, the wettest spot in that area is right where you walk off the deck. So when it's like, when it's actively raining, you walk off the deck and you walk into a flood.
The reason I'm bringing this up is I ran into someone's situation where I live. You are going to be possibly putting all that water that you're going to move from where your drainage, you know, comes off of, then it's going to go down and then it's going into your house.
Right.
So if your intention is to change it so the water doesn't go, you're actually just going to push underneath your deck.
Well, the goal with the retaining wall is to stop what's coming off of the plateau of the elevation of the neighbor adjacent property, to catch that with a retaining wall. So it doesn't even come down in there. And that, that way you're only dealing with the water that's coming from directly over that instead of dealing with all the neighbors' water as well.
Because we're like the bottom of our, you know.
We're the first, first house of the plateau starts to tip.
Yeah.
And, and my apologies, I'm going to write details that aren't germane to this, so I'll stop talking.
You're good.
No.
Any advice is.
I didn't tell you from the side, wasn't it?
What's that?
There's a white thing.
Oh, I just put some lumber there because we were trying to figure out how it's going to make it look because it looks way worse than this in person. It like the dip is pretty. And we're like, how do we do this with a picture?
We're trying.
So I was just trying to show how it's.
We're trying creative ideas to showcase the third dimension, so to speak, because you can't really.
Yeah, we should have made a car.
Probably just uh put a level on it and put a piece of wood till it's level.
Right.
Piece of wood underneath. Show the difference in the height.
Yeah.
So basically your water is going down and heading towards street as well.
Yeah, everything, everything down this east side of the house runs actually north towards Bear Street.
Yeah.
So we're trying to help it flow faster and more efficiently.
I will shut up and I'll let you talk.
So. So yeah, and that's the only reason for the request for the variance is the fact that we can put the retaining wall on the property line as many neighbors have, and it's just a question of what do we backfill the retaining wall with? Is, are we allowed to put pavers there? Are we going to be forced to look at grass or gravel to close the gap between the house and the retaining wall? Whereas it would be obviously ideal just to make it won't be one solid surface or one usable space.
Our only space for privacy too. And we have like so many dog walkers, which is lovely and stuff, but that's like our only spot and it's just not. Could be bad.
Which still isn't necessarily private from the neighbors in the backyard, but at least it's private from the street.
And we should also note that we've talked to all of our neighbors, including Bob, where he doesn't care. Most people are like, I don't know why that would be an issue because really where it is too, you shouldn't even honestly see this at all because you have the front of the house. Nobody's going to see it. And then we have the side of house, so. And if anything, if it was, if anybody did see it, it should be aesthetically pleasing.
You, I'm sorry, do you have the other information?
Um, I'm sure I do, but is there any other questions? I don't know if I.
I'm thinking that we perhaps go through the application.
Sure.
Let's go through it online by the way, in terms of what there is. Looking for conditions unique to the property that do not general provide other properties.
All right. So we'll just go through their application.
Yeah.
Um, and so they filled, oh, obviously there's the cover page, um, and then there was description of the variance, which they've pretty thoroughly described. Um, so for the standards for variance portion, so this is when I went through all of those standards. Um, they say that so for there are conditions unique to the property of the applicant that do not apply generally to other properties in a district. They say the rear portion of the property is twenty point two feet from the property line, and there are only fr- front and rear exits to the house. There is an embankment that creates a depression directly beneath, behind the garage that creates water retention toward the house and water runs into a window well. The space cannot be used for entertaining comfortably because we have to sit on a hill. We have to keep moving our fire pit grill and moving these items and mowing is difficult. Do we want to stop and discuss, or do we want to move on to the next?
Does the uh, the board have any questions? Is he going through his question? Each one here, I'm not really sure if I. Well, you went to where you thought and you wanted to go back. Has any bearing on.
The primary outdoor space of our property is on the north and south ends of the house.
If you want to entertain, you know, you can, you know.
Say if they exit the house from the front or back, going down those sides of the house to get to the primary outdoor space, which is, I feel a little unusual because normally a house is going to be, our property is set perpendicular to traditional setups. Whereas you'd have a big backyard and a big front yard. Ours is sideways. We have no front or rear yard. We have side yards. And in order to exit the house, we're exiting the back, going past this square footage that's difficult to use to try to get to the side yards.
Anybody else have any questions before we wanted to?
Well, I'm just starting realizing they've got a bigger side yards than they do backyard or front.
Yeah.
And uh, is this a corner else?
It's a corner lot, yep.
It's a corner lot. You had to remind me of some of the newer homes that you see now that have very small backyards.
Yeah, I just, it, I have a train to figure out why somebody would build a house there on the corner that way.
Oh, in that orientation?
Yeah, because. Because it was there.
I know, if we would have been on like Bear Street, we could have had a nice backyard, you know, if they would have like turned up.
Mm-hmm.
But I love my house. I mean, I love it. We work hard on it, but yeah.
Yeah, the business of laws, fifty feet. Hey, uh, number two.
All right, this variance is not contrary to the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulations in the zoning district. It is not contrary to the public interest, and that substantial justice will be done if awarded. And their response is our property and house are not laid out in a typical fashion. The house only has one entry on only front and rear of the property. The front and rear of the house are the shallowest parts of the property. The addition of the proposed paver patio will help define property lines and provide a transition to the south side yard.
These are our questions to answer, by the way. We tried our best.
Yeah.
These are, yeah, in the law. We didn't make them up.
Right, like.
And the reason for these questions being so difficult is that the variance, the, the first of all, the, the rules, the ten foot setbacks um apply to different types of structures, garages, porches, decks, auxiliary building, that type of situation. And once you allow variance on one feature, then it becomes difficult to enforce after that tax. So it's really has to be a very strict set of reasons hardships to have to apply to a unique situation. Otherwise, once you open the door, it's difficult to go back. And we are basically a quasi court of law. So we are very much bound upon what the rules are and to exceed.
And I, I one thousand percent understand needing to have rules on things like this. Um, sometimes I wonder about landscape features being put in the category of like a building or like, you know, why is a paper patio the same as a building?
Yeah.
And we've actually talked to one of the, what was it, Jay?
Yeah.
Do I hope?
Yeah, we.
On the side, there's.
Because one of the thoughts is maybe even trying to get that change.
He's my next story.
Yeah. So, so he was trying and he stopped over and whatnot, but I'm like, maybe, you know, that doesn't have to be in for that. Maybe that could be revised sometime. Not this situation, but like.
Yeah, and until that does get revised, we have to follow what those rules are. And uh, you're getting down to the fact of a paper is a landscape feature while gravel is not.
Right.
Correct.
I think the question or the reason for the setback requirement has to be, has to do with how much water is in a cement of the ground and how much is going to run off. And I think the pavers would make the worst, actually, you know, because the veins that we get through, you're especially, it was just trying to break it around. So I think it was just, it might be the thing first one.
I, I have a question. It is. How was the guy allowed to build the house that way?
Yeah.
I'm serious. Very, very serious. He should have never been allowed to put the house up like.
But you look at some of the new houses that are being built and a twenty foot backyard is not unusual anymore.
That's still a problem, I'm saying with.
Understand. I guess I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying.
Say, you know, if you allow a guy to put in, and he's got a ten foot backyard. Just open a can of eggs.
Right.
Yep.
And we are, we're going to take proper precautions to get the appropriate drainage system in with all that, considering too. With French drains and whatever have you.
A French drain? You know, we're going to hook it up to the sewer.
We're going to figure it out.
Not necessarily going to the sewer, but we'll just go up to speed up the water runoff towards the street.
So it would be nothing, no different than what people used to do. They do the salt pumps and then you run a pipe out to the street.
Like we, we, we will make sure that things are done correctly. We will be.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anything else on number two? Uh, number three.
All right, for an area setbacks, et cetera, variance, which is this. Um, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would unreasonably prevent use of the property for a permitted purpose or would render compliance with the ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. And they say, based on measurements, the current ordinance would only allow for a paver patio with the dimensions of only nine feet wide. A nine foot wide patio is smaller than the current existing deck. It would not allow for a planned usage of the space. We are looking to use this space more effectively for entertaining, grilling, a fire pit, and potentially space to add a hot tub.
Okay, that was my question. Is it, what is the space from your lot line to your patio deck? What is that distance?
For, it is close. It's a, the deck is at twelve or thirteen feet. So it's already past what is already allowed.
Okay, so it's less than ten feet from the lot line here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It didn't exist before the box property.
Yeah.
It'd be quite odd.
We didn't grow those trees in eight years either.
It was, it was probably built at a time when the, the setbacks either weren't placed or.
It's redwood decking, if that gives you any idea.
Yeah.
It's a long, long time ago.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions on this? No?
All right, number four. The alleged difficulty or hardship is created by the terms of the ordinance rather than by a person who has a present interest in the property. The difficulty being created by the ordinance is that I'm not able to correct the grade of the neighbor's properly property to redirect the runoff. If we fill the depression, the grade of the land will be above the foundation of the garage. This requires the retaining wall to block the water and redirect it. The pavers will also create a retention area for water.
Retention area, so the pavers will actually be a lower spot than the current level of your window well?
The substrate is gonna, yeah, it's gonna, there're gonna be permeable pavers, and the substrate being clear stone will hold water volume underneath the pavers. So we hope to, by eliminating the water that's coming from all the neighbors' property down in there, creating excessive runoff, we're hoping to control the runoff with the retaining wall, and now the pavers only have to retain the water falling on top of them.
Your plan is to bring the retaining wall down the east side of the property line, and then that's gonna jay back to the south side?
Yeah, to the south side of the garage.
Is there any concerns about where the water falling behind to the south of that jay is then gonna run?
That's already also running into this low line area, because it's, it's literally a square that's low recessed. So our own water from our south end of the property is running down in there, and the adjacent property thirty seven is running down into there. So it's just, it's just a funnel collecting everyone's water. So we're gonna send our south side water towards Esser Street, and then the neighbor's east side water is gonna go towards Bear Street. So the retaining wall creates like a dividing line. Pretty wrong. Diagonally across, there was one photo we provided where the ring my wife was in the diagonal corner, and that's the highest point.
Okay. So that's gonna go all the way to there?
Yeah, but then you want that by, this image here, this is the elevation, so in this corner is where it's two foot, two inches, that's the highest point. And then it's elevated one foot left in here, and before it comes back down to the garage. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good picture, showing how high that part is.
So that part is elevated where she's standing as well.
A lot of dirt to move.
Yeah.
Ask him, maybe.
I got a bid from Max today, and ready, when the dustball was starting, pulling the trigger when we were talking to the neighbors' office, and we ended up here. Instead of digging the hole.
Alright, I think we're on number five. The proposed variance shall not create substantial detriment to the adjacent property. The proposed retaining wall and patio will not impose upon the adjacent property. It will only be visible a few inches above the existing grade of the adjacent property.
Yeah, we're only talking about the patio, so the retaining wall is not really a part of this discussion.
No.
Any questions on that?
Alright, we'll move on to number six. The proposed variance shall be compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood. And the response is, the local neighborhood is set against, against a sloping hill. The properties surrounding us all are terraced with retaining walls all over. There are many retaining walls placed on property lines as well due to the sloping nature of the overall grade of the neighborhood.
Any questions on six?
So again, we're not talking about a wall, we're talking about a patio.
Right, cause we can have a wall.
Right, my response to that question probably would focus on the wrong apartment project. Yeah. But.
Questions on six? Okay, so. Any other comments that you definitely have?
On a theater forever, but we need it, we want it to be, you know, this is like the last part that would make it our forever home. It is our forever home until we ran into this bump.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions? General questions from the board before we start going into, I think at this particular point, now, it's different where you speak, we're showing three, so they stand it now for the variance. Or just what we just went through. And unless they meet, if they don't meet any of the six, just one of the six not being met, then we would not be able to approve the variance, is that correct?
That is correct.
So if we have a negative on one of the six, then at that particular point in time, we'll continue to discuss, but knowing that at that particular time, we would not be able to approve the variance.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. At this particular point, we'll move into the board doing a discussion on on this particular situation, understanding that we're looking at these six items in terms of whether or not we would grant the variance. So should we start with number one? I'm gonna follow this, I'm sounding a little tentative, but this is, I used to only have three standards, when I did this the last time, so.
I think you did the same one, this is the same one you used last time.
Was it last time?
Yeah.
No, going too far back. So basically, the first question is, there are conditions unique to the property, the applicant, that do not generally apply to other properties in the area. So my understanding from looking at this is you have a twenty point two foot from the rear of the building to the lot line, which only allows a ten foot area according to the rules of place for a setback or a patio feature. Am I correct in that interpretation?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so the discussion I'm gonna ask the board to consider is that by only allowing them to have a ten foot patio, does that detract from their use of the property?
I had a question mark on the side of that when I went through on my review. And they, they make a point that all the areas around there have retaining walls. So apparently, there is a difficulty in controlling water, I understand that. But in my mind, less harmful surfaces make it a worse problem than having this branch. That may lose a consideration.
Yeah, I don't know if, if the question is, and this is an open discussion, so please feel free to disagree with me, if you're down here. Whether or not we're worried about water, in terms of that, we're only worried about whether or not the patio landscaping feature can't be allowed to go pat closer to more than a ten foot area and into the setback area. And that's really the question here, the water retention, they're handling that with the, with the wall. So this is more of a landscape, it's almost like a frosting on cake. It's not the cake itself, so this is a feature that they're putting down. But unfortunately, according to the zoning rules, landscape pavers are considered a.
Landscape feature.
Landscape feature. And thus would fall into that variance, we call that need for variance.
And if this were approved, then the next person might come in and say, we wanna shed there.
Yeah.
And we have to treat that in the same boat as pavers.
All of the same.
Correct.
Same thing as a deck. You want to make that deck ten inches from the setback, the landscape features are basically in the same class as a deck. Which, that would be something that Jay would need to resolve at a later time, as of right now.
Right.
I guess. Are they doing anything really different than the other people have done in the area?
Back into the bank for forgiveness and ask for permission?
I don't care, how do you do it?
No, no, I understand. Right, but the question is, to do it, did they apply for a permit and go through the zoning?
Did they have to apply for a permit, because my problem is that people have done a lot of stuff in this town that should've never been done, but they did it at a time when they could do it. And then somebody came in with the new ordinances and decided to take away that right.
Yeah, the grandfather, their grandfather did it that time.
My thoughts have always been, you know what, if you're living in a neighborhood that's having this done, then you should be allowed to do the same thing. Cause it was already a problem there. So why should you start a new family?
Which, which is, which is, which is something for the village board to look at and examine, unfortunately, we don't have that ability to change what the rules are, all we can do is apply the rules, because we're basically a court of law.
That'd be the same, that's what I said, the rules are good for the gander, the rules are good for the next.
I disagree with you. But once, once, once you officially allow it, then the door opens.
I would say though, to answer the question, there are conditions unique to that property, just because of the, to that one question, because of their setback in the rear of the house. That would be considered unique to the other ones in that district, just because of the lot.
What is the legal setback from a house to a property line?
Ten feet. Oh, from the twenty feet, yeah.
It's twenty feet.
It's twenty feet.
So it's conforming to, there are probably other houses that are ten feet or twenty feet from the lot line.
Yeah.
So in that way, I would doubt that it's unique, I don't know that for a fact, but it follows that rule.
Yeah, I'm just looking.
It's like, twelve, twenty-five feet.
But actually, it doesn't get blocked.
No. I'm saying a lot of houses are in that, they're gonna go control.
The setback is twenty-five feet.
Correct, yep. I see it right here.
Yep. Which at that time, the house is built, the zoning laws were different. So, but right now.
Basically, the question mark was built in nineteen sixty, so.
Yeah, not sure if we showed revisal point when this was revised. You know, there was a big revision three or four years ago, but it was changed, so it'd be tough to say. I thought it's been twenty-five feet for a while, but it doesn't matter. It is there, they're not gonna like knock your house down, so, so it'll kind of is what it is.
Right.
So at this, yeah, so yeah, yeah, because so at this particular point, we're looking at the conditions, we are saying that there are some unique conditions to the property because it's a twenty foot versus a twenty-five foot. But even then, I think there's another uh, they go to an eight foot setback. I forget which one is, uh, density five. Twenty-five feet, yeah, it's twenty-five feet. But what you're asking for is ten inches, which is considerably less than, let's say, eight feet. So I guess, you know, we, we have some questions on the conditions that were kind of about, let's put that one to the side, cause we still got five of them.
Another thing, well, ten inch setback, that's again, for the permissible wall. So the ten inches of the skirt of wall, that I can do.
The wall is gonna be.
Right, but this particular case, retaining wall isn't under discussion, we're only talking about theaters.
Right, but you were mentioning the ten inch setback that I'm asking for, I'm like, well, it's not ten inch. But you wanna run the pavers to the wall, so then you aren't talking about.
It's, so if you have your, your white line there for the property line and your end of your patio brace, it would be ten inches from that survey line.
That's fine.
Okay, so, okay, so twelve, okay.
Less than two feet, right.
Less than two feet, okay, let's just go two feet then. Okay, so two feet. Alright, let's, let's, at this particular point, walk away from one, and let's take a look at two. The variance is not contrary to the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulations in the zoning district, and it's not contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice will be done if awarded. My concern is, well, the one concern that I brought up before is that once we go away from the ten foot setback on a landscaping feature, which is unfortunately identified the same as a deck or a shed, then the door becomes open for later ones. That's where my concern is at, in terms of the variance of that particular one. I'm concerned in the spirit and intent of the rule. But I'll not, I talk a lot to my wife, and I'll let everybody else. What do you think?
Well, I, I agree with the fact that setting the preference, a precipice, that we can't do anything about what we've done years and years into the, we have to meet what we're requirement, we don't have any choices except to follow. I think it's a beautiful idea, but I think there's that problem. We, we can't violate the law. It's still, it's just, there's, there's compelling reason that it's not considered.
Mr. Curioth, do you have something?
No, I don't either, the only time at least is that one, when, when we had that.
The snow, the snowmills.
And when we had that, one, yeah, we had fourteen inches of rain.
It's not every day, or every week, it's, it's that, like.
Not a common problem, that the basement's humid enough, but we haven't even lit a fire, but we saw the opportunity to kill two birds with one stone while we're doing the excavating to make patio, direct the water a little bit more appropriately, and send it further south and further north, less and further.
Pat, what are you, what are your thoughts on this?
To me, it's a hard thing to think about, because I see people coming to neighborhoods, and they do stuff. Changes are going all the time, and if the changes have already been made for other people, and then we make new laws that do away with those changes. But if you're living in that area, you're all of a sudden stuck, you can't do it. My opinion is, you know what, we gotta use our heads a little bit too.
So in this particular case, understanding that, you know, we have, well, we have the rules we have to follow. Do you consider that enough to grant the variance on this particular question? Is it to spirit and purpose?
I do, that's substantial to.
You ready? Continue around, Zach?
I do think there's a bit of a can of worms that could be opened up by allowing it. Because like you said, I mean, then everyone can build everything, you know, ten inches from the line or two people line, whatever, maybe. I don't think that falls behind that with the, with the current regulations.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that, it's unfortunate that they've got pavers lumped in with vertical structures.
Yeah, I mean.
But because of that, that is a problem in my mind.
Would certainly be better if the board could come back and look at that. In my mind, and I'm not certain, and you could answer it, but I could, my sense is that looking for a hard surface which will not be grass, not needing to be maintained. I'm just gonna use an example of pea gravel.
And I believe you are talking about using permeable. Yeah, it's gonna rain and stuff. We're gonna set it up with a twelve inch permeable base.
Right, no, I'm not getting, unfortunately, landscape features, landscape features.
Right, right.
But pea gravel is not a landscape feature. But at this particular time, we're only talking about pavers. Okay, right now, I have four no and one yes on number two. Technically, at this particular point, we have a majority of. We have a majority of the zoning board of appeals that has. Said one of these six is not being followed correctly or if I.
That's correct, yeah.
So at this particular point, we can continue through. Please advise me if at this particular point, is that is necessary or not?
I would say let's continue.
Number three. For an area, uh, setback variance. Plans with the strict letter of the ordinance. Would make un, would on green one prevent use of the property for permitted purpose? Or would render compliance with ordinance unnecessarily burdensome? They can still build a ten-foot. Patio, you can't build a twenty-foot one. Because this isn't about water regulation at this time, this is only about. The appearance. So, let's just.
With the ten-foot, the thing is, we would never probably only do a ten-foot because it would make. Uh, maintenance of the area even worse, um, and then. You, ten feet away is not even safe for grill, fire pit, any of that. So that's not a usable space, that's, that's more unsafe than probably putting it on wood deck, that's. Two more feet open than that.
I don't know about fire pits and grills, I don't. I have, I have a melted place on the side of all my. Houses, where I forgot to put the grill on.
Like we like stuff being far off, that's why we move it every time we grow.
And we did have, we did have an eight-foot patio basis by our house. We kept the grill and table on there, and when we, when I drilled, I pulled it out under the grass.
Wait, you'll see in the.
If it rips. You've got some dead grass. But, uh. Right, and for setting tables and things, right, I realize it would be really nice to have a big patio.
Well, let's, let's go through this one, the same one we did the last time. We'll start with you this time.
For which one?
Uh, we're so on number three.
Number three?
Yeah.
So in my mind, it wouldn't make that area unusable. Would it be nicer with a bigger patio? Absolutely. Is it? Untenable with a ten-foot patio? In my mind, probably not. You know, it could still be an entertaining area now. So it doesn't prohibit use of the area now. And it's. There is the larger area on the backside of the house, granted, it's not as private. Or on the side yard. And you could use that space for a walk-through area to. To a larger area at that side yard. It's not as convenient, because right, there's no doors, it's not out, not right up the back, it's. Not right next to the patio. So I get that it's not ideal.
I think it does make it unnecessarily burden, burdensome. I would say that one might, I would vote yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Understand the. Concerns that were being brought up in terms of the only having ten foot. And I don't know that it rises to the point that, um. You would prevent the use. Of that purpose, um.
I pulled up the ordinance or the state. Law here, um, which says, um. So unnecessarily burdensome is by demonstrating that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance would leave the property owner with. No reasonable use of the property in the absence of a variance. In all circumstances, the property owner bears the burden of proving that the unnecessary hardship is based on conditions unique to the property. Rather than the considerations personal to the property owner, and that the unnecessary hardship was not created by the property owner.
I'm gonna go over to, um. This is broadly where I came up with the three.
Sure.
Dane County Planning and Development Division zoning, and how they define an unnecessary. Hardship. I don't know, do we have copies of this for everybody or?
Yeah, I think everybody should have grabbed one. As they walked in, they were right at the end of the table. There's a highlighted portion of it.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I only printed enough for the zoning board, though. I should probably note too, if we weren't get passed for this, we're probably just never gonna do anything with it because. It would be, it is already hard to maintain the way it is, and if we were gonna do the. You know, divided, um, wall, and then do the paper patio to that, it's just more of a mess than it is.
Sure, understood.
And I almost have to deal with it, and it's like.
The highlighted portion that you're looking at, this is from the Dane County Planning and Development Division zoning, which they pulled from the Stevens Point. Website, which talks about zoning board of appeals. The highlighted portion, there's a decks and similar minor accessory structures are not essential to the reasonable use of property. And therefore not eligible for variances. Back to the point of landscaping. Features being defined as brick pavers. Which is really where we're at right now. That's the sticky point that I'm running into. Like I said, pea gravel. I do not believe is a landscaping feature.
No, not in our class.
Yet landscaping papers are. So I'm going back to my answer on this particular question in terms of the hardship. On what Dane County is stating, what is the definition of hardship? And it says that. Decks and similar accessory structures, which is unfortunately able to escape paper. Why that is, I don't know, but it is not essential to the reasonable use of property. Therefore are not eligible for a variance. And I bring it up under this particular one, because this is what we're talking about, burdensome. Unless they can be able to use it. So. Based on what I'm reading here. And the fact that it's still, I'm, my vote is a no on this particular one as well. Like I said, pea gravel, it just still just keeps coming back to my mind. Maybe put some blocks on that pea gravel.
We have made that funny joke before, but no, we want, like, I feel like, kind of defeated only because. We asked permission.
No, I, I, I. First of all, thank you for coming for permission. And, um, at this particular point, I think you had a conversation with Jay Langsout on this already. He probably did your preview where this is gonna go. Okay, uh, so. I don't know that, I know you were hoping, but I think you were. Right, hoping that would happen, but. You know, as we're moving through here. Based on the answer that I'm hearing from the board right now. I like that, I like that.
That's the way they are too.
Yep, the frogs. Yeah, okay, so. At this particular point in time until the. Village makes changes in what the applies for, uh. Landscaping portion of the variant, of, of the zoning laws. Um, and this is considered an accessory. Like I said, that's my, my vote on that. We have two of the. Six, we have those, three, two, and then a. Like, a four-two, a four-one, I'm sorry. Do we, do you feel we need to continue on to four, or at this particular point, do we have enough?
We probably have enough, but I think. I think we should just go through all of them to make sure that. Everything's. Yeah. And then we'll do the official vote to at the.
Sure.
And.
Okay, so number four, the alleged difficulty of hardship or hardship is created by the terms of the ordinance rather than a person. Who has a present interest in the property. That's odd. Think that's created for a different situation than we're in here.
It might be. We can skip that one.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem.
Yeah, and I. I think that's more like when you're working with comprehensive planning. Something like that.
Sure.
Okay, a proposed variance shall not create substantial detriment to the adjacent property. I don't know that this, if this variance was granted, that it would create a detriment to the adjacent property. Retaining laws more of the action item here than the.
Right, with. If the. Water is taken care of correctly, the pavers, in my mind, would have no effect on adjacent properties. Adjacent properties are higher than mine, so water's never gonna be a problem.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to agree with that, uh, so. Let's just kind of go through Dick. No violations. Yep, that's a yes, okay, I'm a yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, let's go on to six. The proposed variance shall be compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood, I said. I don't know if this is applicable.
Yeah.
I can see that, um, more if you were doing the front of a store. A storefront. But I don't see where that would be applicable for pavers.
Yeah.
I'm a bit unapplicable myself. I agree with you. Hot questions. But is what it is.
From a homeowner's standpoint, I wish more information would have been given to us. We've been dealing with this since April. And the amount of paperwork and asking, like, paying for surveyors and. Just all of the information that we've had to do for four months. And we're still ignored. I just wish like, if we could read something and say, oh, it wouldn't have worked, like. Pay me like a thousand dollars and a lot of exhaustion.
Sure, now, when you had. And you can help me out on this.
Sure.
Uh, go through the application process and go through the process and. How this was done, so.
Yeah. So I have that in my memo here. So this was back in our, in, um, April. Um, so I got a, an email from Barry, um, and kind of. He outlined, you know, what he was expecting, or what he was hoping to do. Um, I provided some satellite imagery from our GIS platform. Um, so as measurements can be several feet off on the satellite imagery, I instructed, I recommended they hire a surveyor, which they did. Um, and I asked that they provide me with a survey map showing the property lines, um, proposed patio and retaining wall, location and dimensions. Um, and you know, once all of that stuff is compiled, it took quite a while for them to get all their surveyor, um, items compiled. Um, worked with our planner, Sonia from Van de Wallen Associates. Um, and then came to that ten-foot rear setback. Um, and as proposed, you know, they're requesting. It's significantly more than the ten inch, so it's just under the two foot. Um, cause I did not include the retaining wall there, sorry about that, um. It's still, you know, in violation of the zoning code, so that was the process that we went through.
So at this point, we're done with the deliberations. You kept record of the, of what we went through. So on one. What was the vote on one? That's part of the key sack of.
And I don't know, I thought those were. I mean, we'll have to do a, a vote in general, so that was just kind of a tally.
Sure, so let's just, on two and three, we're ones that had significant discussion and. Opinions on. So, the variance is not contrary to the spirit purpose and intent of the regulation. Public interest, and then the other one, uh. For an area compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unreasonable prevent use of the property for permitted use. Would render compliance with the ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. So we've had comments on those two. That indicated to me that there was a majority of the board. Nicking that, so let's just, putting those two together. We can now come to a formal vote for, uh.
Sure.
We're doing, if you could do a roll call vote on that.
Yeah, can I have that? Perfect. Um, so right now, I just wanted to confirm that we are voting on. Um, possible action on the petition from Barry Angelina Stotts for an area variance. From eighty-four point two nine G of the Village of Cross Plains Municipal Code of Ordinances. To allow a paver patio with a reduced setback into the rear yard at twenty-eight thirty Esser Street in Cross Plains. Can we get a, a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm going to, uh. Make a motion, and then we'll look for a second and make a comment. I think I'll make a motion to deny the variance at this particular point in time. And I'll look for a second before I bring my, if I don't get a second. My concern, and the comment that I wanted to make was the one that I talked about, under unnecessary. Hardship, basically stating that the landscaping, uh, is not considered. Uh, it's a minor accessory structure, and it's not essential to the reasonable use of property, and are not eligible for variances. I still have a problem with the ordinance, including papers. I have a problem with that, I can't get around it, but I don't make the rules. So that's my comment on this, so it's according to the rules that we have.
Right, and those are the rules we need to go by. Unfortunately, they are. One together.
We can get them changed, and it'll be a different situation, we'll get to come back to what I'm saying. Do we have a motion in a second? Any other comments?
Roll, roll call vote? Um, Bob?
Vote to deny.
Terry? Pat?
I vote to approve.
Zach?
I vote to deny.
And Dick? Alright. So we have four no, one yes. That is adequate to deny the variance request.
By recommendation. Be to, we've had a conversation with Jay already. Would contain both conversations with Jay. Seeing if there is a possibility to give a change made on that. Right now, the way the law reads, we don't really have a choice on this. The alternative would be you to be exploring alternative substances other than pavers. That would give you the ability to give a hard-packed surface. Other than require paper, I've seen some, I'm a DIY guy, I've seen some where they can. You take gravel and possibly add the substance to make it a little harder.
Right.
A little more usable downside than that is that. The large thing. But, you know. Explore some alternatives, possibly, whether the landscaper can explain to them what is it you're trying to do. I think you have a reasonable right to use your property. Unfortunately, the zoning, the zoning laws do not allow that. So you need to find a way to work around it, that still allows you to get the usage you want.
Right.
And then if I can just do a caution for you.
Yeah.
When you have the arbor vida, do you have your deck? You have created a pathway which is gonna probably get the water right into underneath your deck and going to your house, and I want to consider that.
Yeah.
And what the downside is, between the arbor vida, which you don't wanna pull, and the deck which you have there. You'll have a little spot right there, I don't know how you're gonna get the water to go all the way down.
Yeah, it's probably, probably. Yeah, that's probably, probably what's caused it and. Little spots to develop at the same time.
Right, and you could possibly do it. Makes you talk about French training.
Right.
What are your French train, there, you know, the collector too going down there.
Right.
Well, past my understanding and hypothesis such as that.
Right. Well, my plan when we get the excavator out, it needs, there's expertise, and you can, you know, and. Grain, especially a grain pipe running under the deck without moving the deck to install it, obviously that would destroy that. Right, but to allow the water a quicker path.
And I would talk to a landscaper about what's for misses. In terms of the papers and see if they can offer you an alternative. That doesn't violate the spirit of the law, but which also allows you to get what you want.
Right.
Because it is an odd situation, but at this particular point. We just have to follow the rules if we have, so, like I called this for.
Only a motion please. Your turn is one.
Is there a path to like approach the town board about the?
You have to, you would have to go through Jalen phone.
Right.
To get on the agenda, yeah.
Which is why I said you had your conversation with Jay.
Right.
Continue those.
Continue this conversation, so you can place things on the agenda for you.
Yeah.
Looking, uh, at this particular time, is there any other further discussion? Looking for a motion to close.
Motion to return.
During my.
Okay.
Looking for a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You can disclose.